Well, looks like we got everybody here and it is being 7:30. And open the meeting and do we want, do we, do we need to recite the governor's order again?
Yes, I believe we do. I actually have it posted right on our meeting materials website. Just pull it up. Okay. Uh, would you like me to read it?
Sure, why not?
Okay, um. Oh, excuse me, one second. Okay. Uh pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, um, general laws, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 16th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Riding Community Planning Commission is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately adjust the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that the persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by visiting HTTPS slash colon slash slash USO2web.zoom.us/j/9854300926 or by calling in 1301-715-8592, meeting code 9854300926.
We should record that and just play it.
Okay, and having said that, Chris, thank you. This meeting is being recorded. For all to know. Which I forgot to say that in the beginning, but I got it now. So, um, okay, so I want to welcome Mr. Seimasko, Mr. Davis, and of course, Vincenzo. It was always good to see you, sir, come to our meetings. You've been very good about that. We appreciate it. Okay, so we, we have 239 North Street on as a 7:30, I believe. So, um, having read through all the notes, there are a couple of questions. One of them would be to you initially, Danielle, after the discussion back and forth with the fire department and the points that were brought up by the opponent that they don't need to make that archway high enough for the ladder truck, uh, as long as all the other vehicles, emergency vehicles can get through and within 150 feet, etc. Uh, are we okay? Do we have the okay from the fire department that they're accepting that or are we still?
I don't have any further correspondence from the fire department yet on that.
Was their response to that provided to the fire department? Or did they, I'm sorry, did they provide it to the fire department?
I believe the applicant, oh, go ahead.
Well, it's just, Mr. Chairman, I think the, well, I'm looking at the last communication from, uh, I think it's the Deputy Chief Galvin is, uh, from the fourth on Monday, and it says the height of the archway is unacceptable.
I understand that. That's why I was, but there is a response to that.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, we, we got that response yesterday and after speaking with Thad, the architect, we can raise it, right? So we'll, we'll raise it to the 13 feet, six inches that the deputy is looking for. That's the only thing that he's looking for, so we'll gladly do it. And it's possible, it's possible architecturally, so we, we're gonna go ahead and raise it to 13 feet, six inches.
That's at the shoulders, correct?
I believe it's the whole span, the minimum, the whole span will be 13, six, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we didn't, that we didn't overlook that and hadn't read anything, so. So that's great. Thank you, Ms. Davis. That helps a lot.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Helps us move along. Okay, and it appears that the majority of the other issues have been addressed. I think the only other one that I haven't seen and addressed is, uh, is Dan Mills' or, uh, comment about sidewalk.
I think that's a good comment, Mr. Pierce. A little offsite.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I should mention, actually, um, the applicant did provide a response to that, which, um, has not been shared with you yet. I think he came in today. I apologize. I can read it out loud if you'd like.
Sure. Well, if it, if it, if it becomes the sticking point, we'd have to include it as part of our approval anyway.
Okay, uh, would you like me to read the response?
Please do.
Okay. In regards to the, oh, and this is from, um, uh, from Mr. Pajasek. I'm sorry, am I saying your name correctly?
Pajasek, yeah, that's good.
Pajasek, I'm sorry.
Close enough, he doesn't mind.
"In regards to the sidewalk, I believe extending the sidewalk from the town hall property to the proposed driveway wouldn't be an issue. Extending the sidewalk to the west past the proposed driveway starts to have impacts on the wetlands area. Don't really see the necessity of having a sidewalk to nowhere on that side of the driveway. Any future sidewalks would need to be constructed on a state property that is located on the corner of North Street and Route 62. With there being no sidewalks on Route 62 in this area, we just don't really see the need here. I'm not sure if extending the sidewalk from town hall to the proposed driveway is a compromise that Mr. Mills would accept or not. Unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to submit revised plans before tonight and would ask that this be added as a condition as well."
Okay, um. The, um, I think the comment, the reason Dan Mills made that comment, of course, was looking at all of the people over on, um, that could potentially come down from the two developments over there. From Martin's, uh, Brook there, Martin's Landing and so forth, could, could walk down there because there is walk, it is walkable to right across the street from that, uh, that little piece of land right there. I wasn't sure who owns that corner there. Is that, is that state property, the corner?
That's the state, yeah. Correct.
So even if you, even if you, uh, went from the edge of the state property, uh, to town hall, you would still be, you'd still be short a little bit.
Well, yeah, we'd be well short of getting to that corner. Yeah, but extending it from the town hall to our driveway wouldn't be much of a, of a, a big deal and the applicant's willing to do that. Uh, but heading, yeah, heading westward, it's, 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 you're starting against impacting the wetlands and then, like you, like you said, there's no actual sidewalk coming from 62 at all.
But the whole.
Is there one on the other side of the street?
No. There's, no, there's nothing on 62 or, or North Street.
Well, on, on the other side of the street, there was actually a driveway area, an area where buses pick up kids and things like that. There's a paved area over there.
The bus stop, yeah.
And there is, um, someone could, uh, potentially walk from the Martin's Landing all the way across through there and, and then cross the street right there, but there's no crosswalk or anything, so.
No.
It almost leads us to, um, petitioning the state or something for something there. To put aside a crosswalk because there are a lot of people over there, a lot of people.
Even more now.
And, yeah, making it walkable from there to, uh, 28 where they could then access the stores and everything over there would be, I think that was Dan's intention. So I guess I'm gonna, I'll, I'll listen to any of the comments, anybody else, but I might suggest that we accept your offer to do as much sidewalk as you can and that we perhaps take it upon ourselves to try and do a little chasing of the state to see if we can get a crosswalk there.
Mr. Pierce?
About that, Mr. Hayden.
So, yeah, getting a, a crosswalk across 62 Lowell Road at the corner would be great. You do have that driveway that comes right down. That's an emergency access way into the originals, uh, apartments there, which connects into Martin's, uh, Landing.
Right.
Um, and the, the, the students do walk down there for their bus pickup, I believe. So they can get around that safety barrier that's put in there so cars can't drive in, but people can get around. That piece of property that's state-owned is relatively flat and clear right at the edge of North Street as far as I can recall. Um, and of course, that's somebody else's property. We can't, we can't ask this applicant right now to, to go across that. But if we can get from property line to the town hall driveway, I think is where there's a, there is a sidewalk. Is there a sidewalk across the front of town hall?
No.
There isn't?
It enters the driveway.
Once you get to the other side, there is a sidewalk though.
Right, right. So they go through the drive, they can walk around the driveway.
Yeah, exactly. They walk around, they loop around the driveway, then it meets up with a, a nice sidewalk farther east.
Yep.
Right. So if we can go from driveway, driveway to the state property, that'd be wonderful. I don't know what you were talking about for how close the wetlands are there, and I understand that implication also. But we get many more feet for the dollar having the private, um, folks do it, and it would be a lovely, actually offsite but onsite for this and, and the owners of this project do take a lot out from the people that, a button across the street, which would benefit the most from this. You know, noise and, and truck traffic and, and the like. So it would be, it would be a lovely, uh, offsite to see happen.
Okay, any other comments? So we're gonna, Will, as part of any decision we make, we will, uh, accept your, your offer to do as the best you can with the sidewalk. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we have any other unresolved issues there? I'm trying to remember. I read so many things here.
Just check the memo.
Obviously, if any approval would then be conditional, the signing of a plan would be conditional upon receiving any changes, any of these changes on a plan.
Right.
Yep.
I think, I think one of the issues, I don't know if you, one of the issues you, the questions last time was about lighting and, and we did submit, the architect did submit lighting plans and specs like that, so those were included.
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
We, do we normally have those light, normally we just look at the lighting plans ourselves. I don't think we have DCI or anybody review those.
We don't normally.
Or ton engineer maybe, but I think we're probably okay with those. I think you understood the concept there, which is important.
Yeah, no, those, I, I looked at them. They look good.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you, Chris.
They look good. I mean, the, the, uh, the down-facing, uh, lights.
Yeah.
The hoods, they're about 4,000 K, which is gonna make them a bit bright, but they're also, you know, they're also a lower level energy. So it, it offsets. Uh, it's gonna be a bright white light, but it's gonna be down and it's, you know, in a good place. The other lights, uh, the overhead lights, um, that are gonna probably be in the tunnel or the bridge area, whatever you wanna call it. Those are a, a nice 3,000 Kelvin, which bring a little bit more into the pleasing. 2,800 to 3,000 is, is, is a, a, a more pleasing light. It mimics more incandescent light. Am I correct, Dave? You're, you're good on lighting too. So.
Okay. Anything else, Danielle? Are you looking?
Um, so just the, uh, DCI had looked at the, uh, site defense information that the applicant submitted and, um, that was acceptable to DCI and to, um, Officer King. Um, and I think the applicant and I had discussed, um, making, putting it as a condition of approval, um, to submit the retaining wall full plans, um, for, uh, building, uh, permit, um, you know, priority issuance of the building permits since those for building permits anyway. I don't think those plans would be ready for tonight. Yeah, that would seem, um, acceptable to me. And then in terms of the turning radius for the fire, for the ladder truck, I believe we heard back from Deputy Galvin. That was fine. I didn't hear any further issues about that. I think Deputy Galvin's only remaining issue had been about the archway, which was, uh, going to be raised. And I think that was all for the remaining issues. And there is a conditional approval a draft, um, in the file. One thing I just wanted to point out about this one because we don't normally do them for, uh, projects that aren't subdivisions, at least not recently. We have been advised by the firm working with us on our stormwater permit that we really should be having inspections done, um, during construction to make sure the stormwater management is, um, appropriate and, erosion controls are, are well under control. So that was really the only other, um, unusual thing about this draft.
Is that done by, by the town consultant and paid for by the owner or is it done by the owner and submitted?
It, it would be our consulting engineer.
Okay, okay. So I was gonna say, I believe in the past, we've actually shared it between the town engineer and the consulting engineer.
We used to. I, I, currently though, the town engineer is just, is just so busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think he would be able to do it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so if there's no more comments or questions from the board, I'm gonna open it to the public.
Mr. Pierce?
Mr. Hayden.
So I'm, I'm looking at the GIS map of the property we're talking about. They have a frontage of 175 feet. Um, and I overlaid the wetland, the DEP wetlands map on this, and it looks like they're nowhere close to that, to go across the frontage of their property to the state property. And then to come across to the second, not the driveway that goes to the rear of the town hall, but the driveway, which is the circular or the, not really circular, it's oblong. Um, that would be the best way. And I, obviously, we gotta get permission from the town for them to work on the property. I'll bet we can get that in a heartbeat. We can ask a selectman or two that are visiting with us now and, uh, to support us and go to the D, uh, DPW and get permission to work on the property with, uh, pretty easily, I would, I would expect. So it, it's, it's a little longer than, uh, than you would think. It's probably about, I'm gonna, I'm just guesstimating here, it's probably about 600 feet, maybe, in total. That includes the, uh, proponent's property furniture. But I think it would be well worth the, that as an offsite. That would be a great offsite for this and that would help this area out a bunch.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? And again, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Please direct all your questions through the chair. And, uh, let us know. Uh, yes, Danielle?
One more thing, um, just in following up on DCI's final review of everything, um, I, I think they still needed to take a look at the, um, the plan revision showing, the, um, uh, the delineation of the area of disturbance to be sure it was under the acre threshold. Um, they just hadn't been able to get to it over the holidays, but, um, I just thought we should put that in as just a condition of approval. Um, that it was subject to, you know, review and approval, final approval by DCI. Just to be sure it was under the, it didn't meet the threshold for the storm.
It didn't trip the, uh, that it didn't trip the stormwater acre.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was, I thought that had been resolved, but, um, apparently not yet.
No, I realize I didn't see the final, um, the, a final correspondence from, from DCI about that. I don't know.
We did, we did add it to the plans and it, it is under an acre. It's just they haven't looked at it. Yeah, so that's all. We, we have, we've gone through and we've shown what they, the delineation, and it's less than an acre, but they haven't got a chance to look at it yet.
Okay, good. I thought that had been resolved, but as long as it has, and we'll just, again, keep it as a condition. That's fine. Okay, before I try this again, are we all set? Okay, good. So any comments from the public or questions from the public? Uh, if you're trying to, if you, if you are trying to make a comment or a question, make sure you unmute yourself before you. Okay, um, hearing none. I guess I can close this, uh, public hearing. And, um, I know we have a conditional approval available there. Uh, and of course, we will have to make sure that we include everything we spoke of tonight. The raising of the arch, the sidewalk and, uh, and so forth. If there are no more questions or comments, uh, Ryan, do you have motions there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I approve the community planning commission vote to approve the court entitled Proposed Office Warehouse Plumbing, 239 North Street, North Riding, Massachusetts, dated 4/27/20, revised 11/5/20 and 12/22/20, drawn by David F. Perkins, Incorporated. Subject to the terms and conditions of this conditional approval dated 1/5/21, as reminded this evening.
Okay, is there a motion? I do have a second.
Mr. Chairman, a second?
I have a second from Mr. Riddler. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Let the record show four in favor, no opposed. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, very much and for your willingness to, uh, work with us on this, especially the thing like the sidewalk that is, that is, uh, Mr. Mills is, is one of our main proponents for sidewalks. He does a great job recognizing the opportunities and he's, he's done it again for us, so. But we thank you very much for cooperating.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice job there, Mr. Hayden, on the sidewalk.
You're welcome, Dave.
I, you know. I think that's a good move.
It is.
I need more sidewalk. It's not safe around that area, really, if you wanna try to come over from the apartments, you know.
It isn't, and it, you know, they, uh, they haven't given back to the town in a lot of ways that way. Or into the local neighborhood. And this is a great way to do it.
I think that's gonna be a good, uh, that, that is gonna be a nice addition to that area.
Yeah.
Danielle, just if you wanna make a note about what we might have to do to get crosswalk there. Uh, how much of it the town has control over and how much of it the state, because I know 62 is a county road. So, um, I believe we have some input into what goes on there.
Okay.
Um, as a county road, so, uh, we'll take a look at it and if we can get a little support from our, from our select persons and, and the process of doing that, we, perhaps we can, uh, get, make something happen there. And I think that opens the door for a huge number of people over there that would like to know that they could safely walk that distance.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's, it's not close, but i- it's a walkable distance to those stores.
It sure is.
The restaurants. Um, a whole bunch, you know, I would walk it if I was living there because it's close.
Once they get to Main Street, they got crosswalks with lights and all the things they need to get back and forth.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just gotta get them there, so.
Yeah.
That'll, that'll work out.
You know, Dan.
We have a couple of minutes before our, um, we have a couple of minutes before our next public hearing here. So, um, could we do some minutes perhaps?
Yeah, I'm looking at them. I read them.
Get the 12 ones.
We have the 12 ones.
Yeah. Okay, um, Brian, do you have a, uh, any emotion for the minutes? Is there motions for the minutes in there, Danielle?
Um, no, there is. Um, would you like me to make a motion?
That's pretty easy.
Yeah. I move it to the community planning commission vote to approve the minutes dated 12/1/20.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, uh, by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hayden. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show four in favor, no opposed. We are minus one member.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the community planning commission vote to approve the minutes dated 12/15/20.
We don't have those minutes. I didn't see them at least.
Yeah, I don't have, I didn't see them in, in my minutes.
I just finished them today.
Okay.
Yeah, no, sometimes I hope to get them done before the meeting, but that doesn't always happen.
Okay, assuming, Mr. Carroll, you'll rescind your, um, your motion.
Send it.
All right. So let's see. And, uh, we, we don't have any ZBAs, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, uh, Malibu Lane Bond Release.
We haven't received all the information we need to do the final release for that, so we'll need to put that on to next.
Okay, we'll, we'll hang on to that. Okay, well, we got a few minutes till CPC representative to the facility's master plan.
So we no longer have Mr. Bella Vance, unfortunately, who had been the representative. So I wanted to bring this up. I don't know if you're ready to point someone or if you want to talk about this and then maybe move it to the next meeting, but I wanted to bring up that this would be, um, it's, it's a vacancy. I don't know that they've been all that active recently, but at some point they will be, so we'll wanna have CPC representation when, when they are.
Well, I know that Abby Hobert is involved in it and, uh, I know that she's been, uh, I don't know if she's the chair of it or not, but I, I know they've been working on it. Somewhat. But again, I, again, like you, Danielle, I don't know how much, how many meetings or how mu- how much forward motion they've had on it.
They haven't had a lot, talking to Abby.
Yeah.
So, no, Rich has got his hand up.
Yes, Rich.
Yeah, they, they have a consultant, so they have a consultant in place and that the consultant's just getting ready to get going. So they haven't, they haven't been together in about 10 months, but they have the consultant and they also are gonna, they're working with the same people that you're working with.
That's right.
Um, so it's really just getting them going and I've been doing as much as I can to try to make that happen, but, um, uh, but that's, I mean, they're, they're all in place to do what they have to do. They just have to get going.
Okay, so, um.
You know what? Warren, frankly, honestly, a, a call from you to Abby would, would be, uh, appropriate in my mind.
Okay, because I did speak with her, uh, a couple of months ago about it. About where they were, what they were doing, where they were going, and she indicated that things were going very slowly. So, um, um, I didn't really push it.
Part of this important information, I mean, let's put it this way, we were just on a, um, you know, with the, the sewage, you know, uh, we were just on an EDC meeting before this and, you know, uh, Mike Liberto is talking about the sewage potentially coming up at the October, um, town meeting. And, you know, we're talking about potentially the winter, um, street project potentially coming up at the October town meeting. If the facility's master planning committee doesn't have their information in there, it's gonna throw everything back. I mean, we need to know what they're thinking as well, and so we really need to get them going.
Yeah, so they're, um, all right, well, let me, uh, let me give Abby a call and see, Danielle, let's put this on to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and let me talk to Abby a little bit about it and see what she's, uh, what she's thinking. And, um, and in the meantime, if somebody feels like they would like to be the representative, I see you, Vincenzo, one moment, please. Um, uh, if somebody would like to be, uh, the representative from us for that, uh, please let me know. Okay, Mr. Studo, go ahead.
Hi, sorry, my mouse is not working. That's what I've been trying to play with for a while here. Um, I have a question, maybe, Rich, you can answer. What, what is the correlation between the soar coming up for a boat and Winter Street and the facility master plan? I'm just, I'm, I'm new to this. I'm trying to.
Everybody, everybody's looking at that 19, $20 million of multi-property money that's kinda sitting in the bank. And everybody kinda has their eyes out for their project potentially going after that money to do it. And so, like the, you know, if you built a new firehouse, and I'm not suggesting they should, but that's probably gonna come back as one of the things, say to $12 million to do that. Um, you know, the, the wastewater people are gonna be looking for seed money to get going, that they're gonna be looking for money. And the Winter Street project we talked about potentially, we might have to ante up potentially, ante up some money to get that, um, you know, to sweeten the deal for the developers, so. You know, but the town can't make a good decision unless all the needs are on the table at the same time.
So. Well, I agree. I agree.
Every, I'm just thinking there's gonna be a collision and everybody has to look at this, you know, collectively from what's the best benefit of the town and where should we put our money or should we spread it around? I, I don't have the answer to that, but everybody's eyeing that $20 million to make things happen.
And, and Mr. Studo, the, the Winter Street project has the opportunity to provide a multi-generational, uh, house, uh, location for, um, as opposed to putting it over in the center of the park and as part of the, it could be done as part of the project, which means as opposed to doing, trying to do two projects, they'd be consolidated into the same project. So again, the facility's master plan is important as far as how those two things mesh.
Yeah.
Quite a bit to it. There's actually quite a bit to it.
Yeah. No, and I, and yeah, I mean, I. Yeah. No, and I, and yeah, I mean, I've been on those, um, I've been, I've been on pretty much every single meeting on that wastewater with the sewer.
Yeah.
So it didn't seem to me that like they were, yeah, from the funding standpoint, maybe they're mutually exclusive. But it seems that, um, again, I'm just trying to figure out how it would be, wouldn't it be that, would it be that the CPC and select board kind of has like, um, like a conversation, like how does it work on the, um, I agree with Mr. Wallner, you, you can't do both. Um, I don't need, I, I don't need a, I don't need a study or meeting to tell me that. I mean, I can just look at, I can do math. So, but I do know that again, I'm trying to come up to speed on Winter Street for this reason, because I can tell you that the momentum on sewer is like a train that I don't think, I, I don't think any amount of studies is going to stop. Like, that's just my opinion for, my opinion for you. Cause I think I, you guys have been doing a lot of work on this and I'm new to it, but I feel that you should, guys should know that the sewer train, I, I mean, i- it's, it's running pretty hot right now.
So, so, so again, to give you a little more input on it then would be the Winter Street project. One of the things that makes it work is a, is a package treatment plan. However, if we look at the sewer project as being happening coincidentally with it, that takes a whole bunch of money that we would have needed for Winter Street off the table and will allow us to use that money in other areas for development of that project or for contribution to the, to the sewer. I mean, those two, those two things could, you know?
Could be nice.
Actually, they, they, the two intersect in a number of different places. So getting this facilities master plan is a piece of that puzzle that I, I agree with Rich, has got to be in there. So.
I'll give you one example. Um, i- if you take like the town hall will be another one that they'll come up with.
Yes, yes.
Well, if you, if you destroy this town hall and then sell that property, how much do you clear of revenue? You know, how much do you make from that? That can be towards rebuilding the town hall in the, with, along with the intergenerational community center. So there's a lot of chess pieces, but without information, you just can't, you can't really do this. So.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point, Rich, that, uh, town hall is another one of those things that could fit into this, uh, Winter Street project, which means all that money could be consolidated into one project, which would give us not just a town hall or a multi-generational community center, but a project that, that would enhance the town greatly. So if we can get everybody on the same page, it, it, it looks like that we can make that money go a long, long ways.
Also, let me, let me ask too, and again, if any of these questions seem like really basic, it's just because I'm trying to soak in a lot of information at once. Um, does the Winter Street project, because depending on how you structure it, would it involve the same level of potential state funding that the sewer can get? Cause I've already started to explore some of that and asked Representative Jones, and it seems that depending on how you can do it, and this is where I think Winter Street, um, uh, for example, like with the sewer, if you guys aren't aware, and I may not even have full facts that state funding is based on how much employment you can almost guarantee from new employers coming in. Is, does Winter Street have any of those components where if you do things a certain way, the state will come in and pick up most of the cost if done right?
As far as I know, we were looking at it as a public-private partnership, but the private developer taking on the majority of the responsibility to build the Winter Street project. However, however, included in that project is a lot of, um, uh, is re- some retail, some, so again, it's got to recall, it's going to create employer, employment opportunities, quite a few perhaps, employment opportunities, just, not just from the building of the project, but from the occupation of it once it's built. So there may be something in there for us there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'll just add one other thing. The other thing from the EDC we were talking about with the sewage is what's the return on investment? And no one has that number yet, right? So.
Well, again, um, that, that, one of the things you have to remember about the sewer project is that, is that the town itself doesn't actually pay, that the town, uh, votes the money and the town supports it, but ultimately the users of the sewer are the ones who pay for it because you, from the state revolving from the SRF is where the money comes from for, to build this sewer, uh, other than the money that we need to put upfront. And the town's responsibility, once the project is done, there's a sewer district that gets created. And the town's responsibility from that point on is to only pay for the sewer that they use. And the rest of the users pay into the, uh, commission and the commission pays the SRF back. So there's, there, there's a big number that's shown up out front, but the vast majority of that money is covered by the users of the system ultimately. So there's, so there's a, um, there has to be an understanding of that, which to, to let you know that we need seed money for that project, but ultimately, the amount of it is carried by the users of the system. So it requires an act of the legislature to create a commission and there are commissioners that run it and so forth and so on. It's a, it's a pretty much a standard project.
So we really need that facilities master planning committee.
As you, the more you talk about this, the more you see how important that plan is.
Yeah.
And they started late.
Yeah, it has so many facets of it.
Is that annual? Is that done annually?
I'm sorry?
Is that done annually, the facilities master plan or no?
No, no, it's, uh, been a long time since they did one.
What about that one, Rich, that you showed me once and then I found it? Remember that master plan that the town already has? Is that something different?
That is something.
That was a master plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the town after planning, master plan.
And it doesn't, it doesn't include the schools because the schools are in good shape. So.
Yeah.
Um, and they, they know what we're doing here because I've talked to them a little bit, at least the school committee.
All right, let me, uh, let me, uh, let me try to touch base with Abby and let's put this on our next meeting as an agenda item. Let me see what their, what their plans are and if we can, uh, identify a meeting and maybe a couple of us go and see what's going on.
I, I'd be happy to help you, Warren, if you want to.
Okay, okay, Rich, thank you.
I'd be happy to.
We'll see if we can move this, move this ahead a little.
Yeah.
All right. It being eight oh six, I guess we can open our three oh three Main Street, uh, site plan review, public hearing. Do we wish to, uh, have the public hearing notice read or do we have that or dispense with it?
Yes.
I have it.
Oh, do you have it?
Okay, if you would please, Chris.
Notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, January fifth, two thousand twenty-one at eight PM on the application of three zero three Main Street LLC for a site plan review for the property located at three zero three Main Street, plan entitled Dos Lobos Restaurant, three oh three Main Street, North Reading, Mass. Drawn by Cornerstone Architects, Inc. You may participate in this hearing online, HTTPS colon backslash backslash US zero two web dot zoom dot US slash backslash J backslash nine eight five four three zero zero nine two six, by phone one nine two nine two oh five six zero nine nine, meeting, meeting ID nine eight five four three zero zero nine two six, or by one tap mobile, one nine two nine two oh five six zero nine nine, nine eight five four three zero zero nine two six, US New York, meeting ID nine eight five four three zero zero nine two six. This hearing also will be broadcast live on NORCAM on the local government access channels twenty-two and twenty-four and on streaming channel online at HTTPS colon backslash backslash NORCAM.org backslash VOD dot HTM.
Okay, we got it. Labyrinth.
Lot more than usual.
Yeah. Now, that's how it is these days. Um, okay, do we have, um, anybody making a presentation on this or, or are we, uh?
Yep, we have, uh, Jim Deets here from Dos Lobos, the owner, and Steve Gabardi, Jim Deets Junior, and then Mike Gabardi also. Mike's going to be doing the presentation for us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I could, uh, share my screen if you guys would like to see, uh, some of the, uh, documents that I, uh, have already submitted through the, uh, online portal for North Reading?
Yeah, we can, we, uh, we actually have them all on our iPads or whatever, our computer screens, but we'll, but you, you'll probably be helpful to you to put them up as you explain them. So we'll know which one you're talking about.
Sure thing. All right, just let me know when you can see the site plan. I have a PDF of the site plan. This was originally done in, uh, two thousand and ten when this, uh, facility, uh, was originally, uh, built. Uh, this original drawing was done by Hayes Engineering out of Wakefield and it was, uh, redlined through, uh, Cornerstone Architects out of Shelmstead. Um, so the, what we're doing at, uh, three oh three Main Street Dos Lobos is rebranding a Mexican restaurant into a brew pub. Uh, and in doing such, we will be looking to eliminate, uh, some of these parking spots. You can see on the lower level of, uh, all the X's, we're eliminating, uh, the better part of nine parking spots, uh, some of them being handicapped. That'll be moved, uh, in the, uh, rendition, uh, above this. Uh, we'll also be removing some sidewalk, uh, and some handicap ramp. Uh, this will be in order to build a twenty-two by twenty-four, uh, three-season patio, similar to what was done over at the horseshoe. Uh, aside of that, there will be a twelve by twenty-two patio, uh, that will link into pre-existing outdoor seating. Uh, the aesthetic of, uh, this buildout will remain consistent with the, uh, aesthetic currently there, a hardy plank siding. Um, and, uh, a- as I mentioned, any of the, uh, uh, a- any of the parking spots that will be lost to this, uh, I believe will be made up, uh, wi- within the remainder of the parking spots, which are, I believe in excess of what was required when I, uh, I believe I saw some correspondence from Danielle. So that's the, um, like I said, my, my apologies, uh, for, for site plan review. Not sure, uh, what else you folks would like to discuss. I know this is primarily focused on exterior, uh, so please ask any questions that you may have on this buildout.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Gabriel. Um, I just, of course, so are you going to submit a new site plan and actually stamp site plan?
Y- yes, sir. So we took this twenty-ten site plan from Hayes. I am working with the person who did that, Rich Williams, uh, of Williams and Sparrages of, uh, Middleton. Uh, he will be completing, uh, an updated site plan as well as some other documentation, uh, that relates to the current septic in place.
Okay, I, I have one question though, just on a drive-by there. If you, if you kind of zoom in on your dumpster area?
Yes.
Maybe, uh, any, any one page or view of that?
This PDF is very, it's very painful. It's a slow, slow opening PDF.
I mentioned that to, uh, our planner. It's twenty-four megabytes, so it's, uh, it's even slow on my computer and that's all I do all day is open CAD drawings.
So I think to the, to the right of, uh, the proposed building, uh, FF one oh two, uh, i- is where our outdoor dumpster area is.
Yes, so my question is, um, there's a note there. Again, this is the, the previous or the last site plan that had, um, whatever features proposed. There's, there's no island right there now. All you have is, call it a Cape Cod asphalt bit berm, you know, that runs there. You do have that low wall and when we say low, you know, it's below grade almost, you know, that's, it's low. There's, you don't even know there's a black wall there. And then you have white PVC fencing, uh, stockade that goes, you know, up roughly where that wall is. And, and then it's just, it's just a berm. And then north of that and plan, where you have the serpent move there, you, you have a Jersey barrier there. Just wondering why the Jersey barrier is there right now.
Uh, Jim may know.
Yeah, Jersey, that, that, Jim, that Jersey barrier was there from when we had the, uh, outdoor dining and the Jersey barriers were required. And when the, uh, company came to pick them up, they forgot that one.
So.
They lost one, huh?
So to kind of piggyback on the building inspector's concerns with public safety right in that very location, how do, how does that get addressed? And let's just talk site like, right now, not architecture. How are you, how are you protecting people right there?
So nothing has changed from the original drawing from two thousand and ten or whatever date that was. That whole side where that existing patio is and the existing, uh, berms and the existing, uh, garbage dumpster area, that's, nothing has changed and nothing will change in that area.
Well, there's certainly been a change there. You didn't, you didn't carry out the plan you proposed. There's no island there. That island is a, a five-foot island. If you zoom in on it and you don't have an island, you have just a piece of bit berm that goes up on the right-hand side there where your cursor is. There's no return. You're using every bit of that stall and you need every bit of that for a waste truck to get in and pull that eight or twelve yard dumpster out of there. So I'm just curious, again, uh, the architectural plans, when we get to them, shows two trees right there in that five-foot island that doesn't exist. Um, and right now, again, it's just fencing, you know, if, if I can be blunt, uh, you know, ugly white PVC fencing and no trees and there's no berm or plant there or anything. And I'm just curious, even if you were to do it, how many weeks until waste management takes it out, you know?
So, so Dave, it's, that's consistent with, with, was approved prior to us even coming in here. We made no change to that whatsoever and have, are not, making no change to that.
If you, uh, you know, the only thing I'd say is that anybody that's in this public meeting, just go on a, on his, on an aerial and that island, number one, doesn't exist. It doesn't exist on my photos that I took today, but it exists on your plan. So that's all I'm just saying is I want to get that right out of the way that if you're going back to Hayes or whoever, you know, make sure they do a proper as-built of the property, um, not just assume that what was proposed and was never done, you know, but when they built the place, it should be taken into account that it should be done. Or, you know, again, I, I'm not saying it has to be a five-foot berm. I'm just bringing up the realities of retail and trash removal. I don't know if you get enough room there. So if you're going to propose something, propose something that's real, that the commission's going to look at and, and know that that's what you're going to build. Because I suspect the Jersey barriers there just to protect, you know, your, your terrace there from waste management, Casella, whoever, from taking it out, you know?
I follow that.
Sure. We can, we, we can bring that up with, uh, Williams and Sparrages. Obviously, they'll be out on site to do, uh, this, uh, this updated and stamped site plan. We can address this. I'll, I'll note this a- as a question of concern that it is in this twenty-ten rendition, uh, but was never built. Uh, the white fence does end somewhere around my cursor, uh, and blocks off, um, uh, a- any access to the, uh, five to six yard dumpster that's currently there. And I know one of the concerns I believe was a, uh, that was brought up, I believe, by, uh, Mr. Noel was just, uh, he brought up specifically, uh, um, pedestrian hazard, um, uh, out by the, the patio, um, in, in, in one of his concerns, uh, in some documentation that was sent by Danielle. And I can switch over to a, uh, more detailed architectural rendering, an eight-page PDF, uh, that may give some more, uh, detail to this particular, uh, section, which is part of the site panel review for what we want to, uh, build with this twenty-two by twenty-four three-season and the twelve by twenty-two patio. So were there any other questions with the site plan before I bring it down then attempt to reload it later?
Well, is it, is there a intention on your part to put ballards in there or somewhere along there?
I've checked with Rich Williams. There, there was a discussion. I asked Rich what would be code required, uh, as far as ballards? He didn't believe there was any specific code requirement for ballards, uh, given the fact that we would have on this, uh, this area here, uh, that I'm highlighting with my cursor will be the twenty-two by twenty-four, uh, buildout, which will have a four-foot frost wall, uh, provide adequate, uh, patron protection. Uh, this twelve by twenty-four will have a fence section that will tie into the current fence, uh, that is around this area. There is no, uh, use of ballards out there, uh, currently for any patron protection. Uh, there is a curb, uh, that sits up approximately six to eight inches, uh, above the level and elevation of the, uh, parking lot.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, Mr. Hayden.
Um, if I'm not mistaken, that little outdoor patio, did we ever really review that or was that after the fact and the building inspector reviewed it because of the size?
I'm not sure if that got added on for the COVID thing either.
It wasn't, well, the original one wasn't. They had it, they had a little patio out there for smoking for sure. Um, and then they probably got more, had, had added more tables out there for COVID. So they had to add protection. And that's what the protection's for. That's So they had to add protection. That's what the protection is for. That's what those Jersey barriers were for to protect.
Right, right.
Since 2010, we've had how many people go through buildings and hurt people? A month ago, they up in, up in Nandober or North Nandober went right into, into a restaurant. Luckily, nobody was hurt, except for the woman that was driving the car. She took out a roof support at the, you know, the Rockies Plaza there?
Yeah.
Right there.
So there's just a berm there then that keeps everybody from driving over that.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to keep a car from driving over that and coming in there if they go too fast.
You know, cars backing up too. I don't think in the site here, it shows right angle parking. I think in the architectural, it probably correctly shows angled parking because.
It should definitely be angles parking.
Yeah, but again, again, if you're, if you are backing up that you'll break, break for the gas issue. And to comment on the, there's no code requirement. I mean, that's kind of an empty statement really. There's, you know, the only, it's you've got utility groups that have a requirement for ballards. And that's as arbitrary as anything. It's an N star national grid person coming out and saying, I want one here, here and here. Similar to the way the fire department works. It's, there's no real written thing in there that says you have pedestrians here and you need to protect them in every single case. So I mean, it, it really does need to be looked at case by case. So what, what Jerry raised is valid. I think he's, you know, it's a reasonable thing he's raising and he even mentions, I think you might be doing that with ballards. Or I suspect you'd be doing it with ballards. So it'd be something we definitely want to look at around there just to protect the public that would be seating out there.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Sutton, Sutton, we can for sure discuss.
It's in your own best interest. It's in all of us, everybody that's in this meeting.
Yep.
It's a safe way to do it.
Okay. I could switch over to if we're done looking at this general site plan, which we know was going to be updated and stamped per Williams and Sporages. I can change over to a, the most recent architectural rendering that I also submitted to the town for any additional questions.
Okay.
It's all right with me.
The only other thing I saw that was the fire department wanted a better access to the fire control, fire detection controls.
Yes.
Their, their connection. Where is the FDC right now? Like?
I believe it's right here. When I did walk through with deputy chief and he did call out the fact that the way we were setting up this new area for a handicap ramp and the fact that we are closing off four foot worth of section for handicap van accessibility is going to give him what he needed to come in, park a fire truck and put hoses at a reasonable angle to connect to the fire apparatus, which is right here against this bump out sidewall. So he did, he did seem relatively happy with the fact that we were adding this handicap ramp and block out in this particular area.
Okay.
Good for me.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't ignore that. That's all.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here is the architectural rendering, an eight page PDF that I did send over. This is the exterior elevation of what we're looking to add. So this is the main entrance currently to Dos Lobos. It would remain the same. What we're looking to do on the outside, I'll start on the further side closest to IPF. We are looking to repurpose two windows with a set of doors that will be the access point to our brewing production area. And this is where that handicap ramp I mentioned will go. That's for a reason. So that we can receive and send out grain and spent grain in and out of the production area. The fire apparatus is right here. As I mentioned, this new handicap area that will be somewhere out here in front of these doors will give proper access to the fire items. Moving over from that section, we're keeping the rest of the exterior the same, including the front entry array, which is right here where my cursor is. What we'll be looking to do is take over five or so spots in the parking lot and create a 22 foot by 24 foot three season bump out. As I mentioned, very similar to what the horseshoe did. These retractable windows will basically be overhead style doors, just like the horseshoe. They will be obviously on this outward facing wall. They'll be on this side facing wall and, and on this left side wall, they will be at ground level so that we can access what will be a patio approximately 12 by 22. And then that will go over to this area we just talked about, which was the exterior seating area. That's, that's been pre-existing and is there currently. So these are the major changes we're looking to do to the exterior of this building. They are primarily on the parking lot side. There is one change and I apologize for not noting this on the site plan. We are looking to add to a second pylon sign out on the main street side. So this original site plan called for a sign right here where my cursor is. And there is a concrete pad poured there appropriately for it. Right, right here. Sorry if you can see my cursor moving out in front of proposed building FF102. There is a concrete sign pad there, but there is no sign. Where the sign actually ended up was over here where my cursor is on the opposite end of this building in front of the IPF. The fitness location, I think it's notated on the bottom portion of this. So we'd be looking to add a second sign here where that was up on the, on the prior site plan. And there's already a concrete pad there to accommodate that sign. So I'll get back.
Well, the question would be, did the original plan abandon that, that one in, in, in play by you and take the other one in place of it?
No, Mr. Pierce, what happened was that when we took over three years, four years ago here, that sign was not seen from the road very well because it was in a, in a valley. So with the, with Jim Dimitri, the building owner here, we decided that we were going to redo the entrance. And we got that all approved and did that. And we also moved the sign at that point over to the other location.
Okay.
So we're adding a sign or we're going to remove a sign and move it?
At adding a sign.
Okay. I think that may be an issue.
No, we don't have to add it. It's an issue.
Yeah, the current sign is actually to the left of the, call it left driveway.
Yep.
Yeah, it's right, right where my cursor is right now, out in front of where the other dumpster area is for the, for the gym.
So I did. If that sign becomes an issue, we'll just put that in the back burner.
I can go over the zoning by law. I'm pretty sure you're limited to one pylon sign.
That's fine. We'll abandon it.
But I can check that and get back to you.
Well, with that being said, that would be the only street side, main street side exterior change that we were, we were looking to make was that signage. The remainder of any changes to the exterior would, would be on the parking lot side and be made up of this three season addition, along with an outdoor patio that would have a trellis over it leading into the pre-existing outdoor seating area.
Okay. Well, it kind of appears that there's a, we're looking at an old plan and that we're, and that we may be a little premature in our meeting here, not having an up to date plan with all these changes that you've, other than the red lines. So it would probably be good to get a plan with all of these things put on at all at once. So we can look at the whole project at once.
The site, this particular eight page PDF that was uploaded to the town along with a prior that was dated 12 eight. So there should be two versions of this that, that currently exist on that. I, I forget the name of the, the platform that I upload to, but both should be out there. The red line should be out there as well as a few other documents.
Yes, we do have copies of, of all of those. I, I think that there are some elements that are not incorporated into even yet, that aren't yet incorporated into those plans. But yes, the board members have received the red line site plan and.
I've got the red line plan, yeah.
And the architectural drawings are in there.
Oh, there's, there's 150 seat drawing in there, Warren. And then there's the.
Okay. I didn't look at the 150 seat drawing because.
Yeah, that's a new drawing. That's, that's where their, that's where their facility in there. And I did have a couple of questions about that, if I may, Mr. Pierce.
Yes, please.
All right. So we've got, I see where all your, your mash tanks and your distilling tanks are. And then we got a large space, large open space. What are we doing with that open space? Is that storage bottling area?
No, that, that, that's purely production area. This is only, there's only from, from this wall, the shared wall with IPF to this drink rail is only, is only 12 feet. This, this line in the middle is 48 feet of continuous trough drainage.
Okay. So what, one of the problems is, is that we got a big piece that doesn't belong to your, to your plan in there. You follow what I'm saying? To the left of the, of the, that, that wall behind the tanks?
Behind the tanks is.
Yeah. Yeah. You should, they should put something in there to tell us that that's another part of the building.
Okay. All right.
You follow what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
It's confusing for us and it will be confusing for the general public if they looked at these drawings. More confusing for them. We look at drawings often. What, how many presently, how many seats are there in the Dos Lobos restaurant area? Do you know?
I'll leave that to Jim, Jim Deach Senior. I believe he'll know better.
Okay. Yep. So currently we have about 175. I think we're coded here for 200. I have to check. I used to say it on the liquor license years ago. It doesn't anymore. But the function room, which consisted of about 150 seats is no longer, it's down to, you can see a limited amount of seats here.
Right, right, right. No, no, I understand that. And.
And then we lost all the seats. If you, if you look at the, this, this area here, I don't know if you see my cursor or not, but the two booths, the round booths, we lost all those seats there too.
Are you taking those round booths out or are you leaving?
Round booth sustained, but right along here, we're all booths that are no longer going to be there.
Okay.
So we've, we have less seating than we did, than we're actually.
Right. So if you had, if you had 200 plus because of that, of the function space, you're going to be down by almost 100 seats. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Cause that helps with your parking because if you, if you fill the restaurant and you fill the, the function area, there wasn't enough parking. I have been there several times when that happened and that was when they originally opened.
Well, unfortunately, we've never had enough business to fill the parking lot. So I wouldn't.
I'm sorry for that, but. Yeah. So that, that was back a long time ago. So.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
No, this, this plan does show us at 150 total, including all, all outdoor, which is the, the three season area patio, restaurant interior, and then the old function room, which is now a tap room. So entire premises, including outdoor, three season and patio will, will be no more than 150 people.
Okay. How many people do you expect to be working in the, in the brewery area? The brewing area?
The production area during a normal course of business where we're physically brewing beer, no more than, no more than three people.
Okay.
It's, it's a relative, it could be a one to two man show most of the time with a third coming in to help during days that we keg.
Okay. That's fine. I mean, you know, it, it didn't look like you were going to, you were going to go over parking wise because of the reduction in your, in your seating. But I'm not the one making that calculation. Danielle usually does that and calculates what the, what the parking and the seating and all that other stuff goes together for us.
Yes. And I apologize, my memo on this project did not make it into your file. So I've actually just uploaded it a little while ago. Um, yes, I think they are fine on the parking. I'll do a final check, but I, but yes, they, their seating capacity is now less than it was. So the total numbers, including the retail space are, they, they should be within that.
Mike, can you zoom up? Zoom up really? Just go up to the front of the building. I just want to again, look at that. Got it. You might want to just unlike your elevation and here you might want to mark out the fire department connection, the FDC. As you, you can see the box there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have him mark it.
Sure. So then when the deputy chief sees it, he knows again, he can positively identify both on the elevations. And then a question I have on just in general, because it's, is this, I don't know if you, if the architects on the, but are you doing a code analysis on occupancy here? Does it change to, you know, breweries often become F2s factory? And so you have to kind of change the use there and then you get, you get you a tap room, you know, could be a B or an A2U. So everything kind of changes from just being pure, pure, say restaurant like before. And have, have they gone over that with you?
No, we have not. We, we, the way we were thinking, this is a rebrand. This tap room is just an extension off of a spot that is already a restaurant. Will continue to be a restaurant. We will just have on premises beer production. So the, the idea was to keep, keep the same restaurant, keep the same similar menu. And, and, and just change, change concept from, from Mexican to a more of a pub style.
But I think your drawings, you know, your drawings will probably want to have a code analysis because I believe the production part, and if you're doing any retail of beer, are you doing any, I should ask the question, are you retailing?
David, this is Jim Beach Junior. I don't know if this will answer your question. So we're going for a brew pub license, which is essentially a brewery restaurant with retail. And when we first discussed this with Jerry, he said, because we're not distributing any of that beer, there shouldn't be any new zoning required. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, it's, it's a two part. So it's not as much the zoning and if Jerry's looked at it and doesn't see anything. But it's also just the occupancy, which could drive different require. Again, sprinkler requirements, you, you've got, based on having an FDC, you've obviously got your wet system. But you might actually have a different coverage requirement because of the F2 requirement and that little sliver you have over on left there. That's all pure production. It's factory, should be factory. It shouldn't. So you're going to have multi-use across this, whereas before you enjoyed more of a, a restaurant use occupancy, which is fine. So what that'll trigger is it could trigger different things about egress, different things about the amount of GPM on a, on a, on a sprinkler head. All those kinds of things. It's, it's not necessarily under the purview of this commission, but it's something missing right now in your drawing set. You should probably have a code, a page, you know, on the cover page that gives another little bit of an analysis that you see usually on a new set of drawings. And then it'll just list the use occupancy and maybe it'll all be the same. Maybe after they do that check, there won't be any changes to it. But I think since the change is enough, you, and Jerry's kind of indicated, he'd like to see, you know, some confirmation that, that that's been looked into because that might trigger different things. One hour rated, two hour rated walls between the partitions. Right now they're probably, probably already that way now, but you get what I'm saying. I'm not, you're not looking to solve it tonight. It's just, you need to look at it, I think.
Sure. I can speak with the current architect and discuss a code analysis with him and see if we can't get a, a separate page to try to clear up some of these, some of these questions.
It just would be, it would just be a table. And you know, under if it triggers certain things, there'd be some notes on it. That's all just, they'll know what, they'll know what, you know, that is.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. If you could remove your screen share for now, I'm going to open it to the public and see if there's any public comment or questions. So that I can see everybody. This is just us, but I am going to open it to the public and please direct all your questions through the chair. Are there any comments or questions from the public on this project? Okay. I'm not hearing any. So we'll just, we're going to have to, this obviously is going to get extended for us to, to give you a chance to update your plans and bring us any of the changes that we've talked about tonight. Any other comments or questions from the board at this point? Okay. So we're going to continue this to, what, do we have a time certain for that, Danielle? Okay, so we're gonna continue this to, uh, what, do we have a time certain for that, Danielle?
Um, January 19th is our next meeting, and, uh, let's see, we currently have, oh, maybe Debbie can help me with this, um, for the times, uh, we have another public hearing beginning at eight?
Yes.
I think 7:30 would be available. Would we want to do it at 7:30?
You think, um, they can have everything to us so that we can review it?
Yeah, that's only two weeks. It's a lot of, could be a lot of work in that.
Yeah. I, I, I feel relatively, I mean, uh, some, some of these changes that this, uh, our architect did was, uh, w- within 24 hours, created the entire site plan redline, uh, created the entire, uh, outdoor area updates within 24 to 48 hours. I, I feel relatively confident uh, that if I go back to him stating that we need a couple of changes made to the, uh, architectural layout and this 150, uh, seat PDF, uh, I think you're gonna accommodate those well in advance of this, uh, the two week meeting.
Okay, and if you can get Rich Williams to take care of the engineering part of it as well. So, um.
It was supposed to have that by the, what, the, uh, the 12th Danielle, Tuesday, the Tuesday before the meeting? Or do you let it go a little longer?
Uh, for continued plans, um, there's no firm date we have. It's, it's nice if you can have it for a few days before the meeting, so you know, you can see it, and so we can.
Have it by a Thursday so that we have a chance over the weekend.
Yeah, by, yeah, the 14th would be nice, because then they can upload them on Friday and, and we can see them over the weekend, so we're not crammed.
So you're, you're talking, so not only the, the, so the architectural plans, which is the eight-page, uh, PDF, uh, the one-page 150-seat document updated to show, uh, the IPF space, and then you're talking about a, a full stamped, uh, walkthrough site plan, updated site plan for the next as well? Or are we talking just the architectural?
If we're gonna be voting on this, we would need an updated site plan.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you know, we're not gonna vote on an incomplete or a non-existent plan.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure that I've got, I, I've made those annotations. I'll speak with, uh, Charlie Cochrane, uh, the architect, and I'll speak with, uh, Rich Williams tomorrow to make sure we can get these in.
So if it looks like it's gonna be a problem getting it done in time, please call the office and let Danielle know, and we'll reschedule. Uh, because it is kind of a tight timeframe for these guys to work in. I know you're in a hurry to get going, but sometimes, uh, they can't, uh, get things done quite as fast as you might like, so just keep us in the loop, so we know.
Yes, sir.
So as of now, we are on the agenda for the 19th at 7:30?
Yes.
Okay.
And hopefully you'll have everything together, so we review it, we don't have any major changes or questions.
Great.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just take another quick look at this.
Guys, did they, did they propose a sign, an actual like logo or anything?
Yeah, there's a sign. It was in the, it was in the, uh, share file.
Okay.
But they're not gonna do it, they're not gonna do it unless they come looking for, they'd have to, uh, I, I, my, and my recommendation to them, of course, would be that they do a, if they want to do a, a new sign, that they're gonna have to submit a signage plan for the whole site again.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Right, they, they wanted, you know, there was discussion about the monument, but I'm talking about even the replacement of the, the Dos Lobos on the front that exists now. Okay. Yeah, I see it now, okay. Yeah, this one's, uh, expansion, you know, monument type.
Yeah, the size and all that, they can, they, you know, but, uh, but if they're gonna make any major changes, the sign plan would be, uh, uh, pref- preferable to, uh, so that we have everything on one, on one page, on one, one side.
I, I, I think they moved the sign for a couple of reasons. It was a little bit hidden, and they were able to add IPF to it.
Right, exactly.
And they don't have IPF on this sign, so.
Right. Okay, so I think the only thing left on our, to me, our agenda tonight would be, pardon?
They have IPA now.
Yeah, there you go.
The only, uh, the only thing left would be our planning administrator update. Do we have anything tonight, or are we good?
We're almost good. I promise to keep it brief. Um, uh, January 14th, the Capitol Committee is gonna, has invited me to their meeting to discuss the Central Street sidewalk project. If anyone is interested, I can pass along the information, um, the town engineer. I'm sorry?
I'm sure Dan will be. Interesting.
That would be terrific. Um, and, uh, the town engineer said he was also able to attend that, so, um, I will be presenting it that night. Um, uh, I should say afternoon, it's 4:30 in the afternoon. Um, just wanted to, oh, we, we do have a few additional business loan programs that we've been made aware of, um, kind of trying to get the word out. Um, there, there are some sector-specific loan programs, um, that are focused on things like fitness centers, restaurants, bars, places that are really, you know, having a hard time, um, you know, as far as, uh, COVID right now, and, um, I've heard from a couple businesses already that they, uh, believe they're eligible. This doesn't have the same income eligibility requirements as the earlier loan programs, um, that we were, that we've been working with, and so we're hopeful that it'll apply to more people, um. The deadline for that is January 15th, so it's pretty tight turnaround, um, and.
Name of that program, Danielle?
So.
I, I have a, I'm gonna at least forward it to her, tell them a lot.
Oh, sure, sure. So it's, um, I can actually, I'm gonna put the, I can put the website in the chat. Um, it's the MGCC, um, and it's their sector-specific loan program. Um, let me just put in, um, the okay, so it's empoweringsmallbusiness.org. They just posted, um, some additional loan programs. They had, had a previous program, this is a little bit different, this is a little bit more expanded, and, um, requirements are not quite the same, so hoping more people will be able to see it. We put it out on Town News, um, I know the chamber is gonna be getting the word out about it too. Um, I sent it to a list of some of the businesses who had indicated interest in previous small business programs, um, so I guess wherever we can try to let people know would be great. I'm thinking about how to get the word out about that. Um, let's see, what else do we have? Um, Advocus had gotten back in touch with, um, some further refinements to the plans they'd been working on. Um, I can share that with you. Um, tonight's agenda was a little bit full. Um, you know, they've offered to follow up, you know, with a call. Um, I can pass along the information to you, and if it seems that it makes sense to schedule them again for an upcoming meeting, we that. In the meantime, I did pass along the information that Ryan, um, gave us when we were talking, when he was talking about, um, discussing with some developers, um, what, you know, people might be looking for and hoping to hear, and they felt that, that seemed to be pretty consistent with what, um, you know, what their understanding was. They've also been reached, reaching out to some in the development community about this, um, with a slightly different kind of a focus, maybe more of a, um, uh, more of a, a high-level view rather than, um, the specifics of the site, but they said that they would gather whatever feedback they were getting from developers, um, and, um, and, and pull it together for us. Um, so that should be interesting, um, to hear. I think we are going, um, to be dealing with the, the 5G small cell, um, situation pretty soon. Um, I think, well, Warren and I had had a brief discussion, we thought maybe March 1st would be a good meeting for us to have a workshop discussion about that. Um, I know we had also mentioned at one point getting like an industry representative to talk to us about 5G and what it's going to look like, and really how it's rolling out and how the whole thing works. Um, I, KP recommended I reach out to, um, a gentleman who works for the city of Boston, who, um, has been very involved in their communications and broadband and small cell networks. He was, um, kind enough to write back to me, and he actually said he would be willing to talk to us at a meeting, so, um, which I thought was very generous. Um, and I will reach out to him and, um, see what we can arrange. He's, he's already sent me some materials that he uses to explain this to people, so I'm hopeful that that can work out, uh, maybe on the same night that we have our discussion.
That's great, like to be, yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry?
The more we know, the better.
Yes, definitely.
So let's learn what we can learn.
Yes, absolutely. And in the meantime, I do have draft, I have a draft policy that KP prepared for us, um, that really would involve us kind of customizing it a little bit to talk about some of our aesthetic preferences, but it actually, it actually goes pretty far. It's much more detailed than I think some of the sample work that they had given us in the past. Now that this has moved along a little bit and we understand more about what we're allowed to regulate and what we're not allowed to regulate, they have really been able to pull together a nice draft for us that doesn't leave us to reinvent the wheel. Um, it actually seems pretty manageable. Um, so I can share that with, you know, with, with everyone. I may start a drop, a, a share file folder um, earlier, way in advance of the meeting, just so everyone has a, a chance to look at everything, so I guess keep an eye out for that. I'll let you know when I, when I create that in the share file, just so we can start looking at the materials.
Okay.
And let me see, oh, we, we recently notified that we received a grant, um, Meg Robertson from the Commission on Disabilities has, has been suggesting for the last few years that we apply for a grant, um, for the state to do an ADA, uh, evaluation and transition plan, which the, the town has, you know, not done and, 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 and it kind of been overdue for a while, so this is something that I had spoken with, um, town administrator before, and we agreed that this would be a good time, and the, and the building commissioner too, we agreed it would be a good time to, um, hire some help. Um, so we received a $35,000 grant, um, to do that work, so we'll be looking for someone to send their contract soon.
That's good.
Yeah, I don't know who's managing that project, but because I wrote the grant, it's probably gonna be me, that's, that's okay. Um, so it's important.
Don't put too many hats on, Danielle.
I need to stop finding grants, because every time I find one, I end up with a project.
Yeah, you gotta manage it, yeah.
Okay.
Carpenter Drive, um, as we discussed at the last meeting, we have sort of a small group, uh, that is gonna be, uh, discussing some of the preliminary stuff with Carpenter Drive. Um, Warren, um, you know, and agreed kindly to help us with this, and I actually, I don't know if you had a chance to look at your email, Warren, but I did.
Yes, I did. I printed out all those plans.
Great.
Different concepts, and I've looked them over. I don't have an opinion yet on them.
Okay.
Questions about the way some of them are done, because you know, some of it looks like pie in the sky, and some of it looks a little more practical, so, uh, but I'll, I'll discuss with that more after I spend some time with them.
Sure, sure. Um, the, the goal would be after we discuss it, as, you know, the small group, we were going to be, uh, scheduling a neighborhood meeting, because neighbors have really started to make inquiries. Um, obviously, they saw, you know, soil testing going on, and they have questions, and I've had a lot of individual conversations, but we thought it would be a good time now to just, just invite others to, um, you know, have a, a virtual meeting and hear some more information, uh, about where we are, so, um, let me see.
And we should talk about it ourselves too, about, you know, because I think that one of the things as a planning board, um, one of the things that the people are gonna expect from us is that we've looked at this and put whatever expertise we have into making recommendations.
Okay.
So, because, I, I mean, we, we, we do have a lot of talent on this board, and I think we're able to, uh, to give them some recommend, some practical recommendations on what we think would work.
Okay.
So, and probably, um, I would probably think that we would want to coordinate with the board of selection too on, on, um, on our recommendations as well, before we put them out into the public, if you know what I mean.
Just as far as you mean the timing of the neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, which one of these four items and plans appears to be the most practical for what it is that, that needs to be done?
Yeah, they.
Have they been, yes, yes, Mr. Stude, have you seen these plans yet?
Yeah, I did. I took a look at some, and, um, I think, uh, I agree with you, Mr. Pierce, and I think what we can do is after we have that small discussion that Danielle's gonna put together, maybe, um, it's something where, um, I can have at least a short, well, once we decide, you know, primarily you, or decide what the best course of action is, maybe then I can take it and under my, uh, committee reports, have at least a brief discussion with the full select board, you know, just to get that preliminary, just so it's kind of like, it's not, um, you know, it's not used to, to everyone, once it does.
Yeah, so we may categorize, we may say, this is, we like this one the best, but this was second, third, and fourth, and then, and then, and I, some of our reasoning, and then, um, and then it's always better to, you know, multiple eyes and ears looking at something, many times comes up with the best plan. So we'll do that, and then, and then the select will can look at and say, ah, but what about this? And we'll say, okay, we'll change these to here, you know, take, take this one and make this one first now because of a good recommendation, so.
Right, and the select board has to buy in. They control the property.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, uh, I, I think it was, uh, what, what I wanted to do is to make sure that we're, one of the things that makes this all work really well is when both boards are on the same page.
Yep.
And so I think it's really important for us to, we'll, we'll do our stuff, and then we'll sit with them, and then we'll get everybody on the same page before we go to the general public. And that's what we're thinking.
Yep. So that's it, that's it, that's the way to do it, because then they can, we can answer the same questions to different people.
Exactly.
And then you can get, um, you know, you get the most, when you could, I, I feel like, you know, I've seen already in town, when you can put on a unified front, there's much more chance that the recommendation goes through versus
Exactly.
the town meeting becoming, I don't want to call warring of sides, but it's more of, you know, I feel like when the collective have way too much sometimes to think about, and now all of a sudden, well, who's right, who's wrong, it's like, well, maybe it's better just to do nothing right now, which is always the worst result. And I've already, I've been in town like almost four years, and I've already seen that a couple of times, so I, so, yeah, I agree.
Now you know why I want to do it this way. I want all of us on the same page, and I want us to go with the united front, because we've all looked it over and, and, and we all agree that this is the best way to move forward.
Yeah, the united front wins the way.
Yep, yep, that's correct.
I can drop the plans into the share file, so all the CPC members can see them too. Um, they're just in draft form, and, um, I definitely, yes, I, I love the idea of getting some feedback from, from both boards. I also, I want to make sure we don't wait too, too long before we start talking with the neighborhood, because I do know that they're very interested in hearing where we stand with things and what we're thinking of doing, and, um, you know, don't want to make sure.
Well, if it looks like, um, that there's some strong opinions and we need to do a workshop earlier, you know, I suppose we could, um, audit or something.
Well, I think having the neighborhood meeting to let people know.
Okay.
Or, or, no, I mean, certainly at our next meeting too, we could have a discussion about it, um.
Well, did, when you say you have a small group meet, you want to have a small group meeting, is that? That's.
So, so yeah, so having the representation from each of the boards, from, you know, you representing the CPC, um, you know, uh, from the select board, um, also Mary Prenney and, um, and, um.
Dan Mills.
Dan, who's right here on the call. Thank you, Dan, um, from FinCom, um, having, having that group sort of, um, helped to, you know, in church, just in terms of having some representation from the other boards and committees in town. But, you know, it's, it, because it's just, it's come to my attention that the neighbors really want to know what's going on, and they, I, I know that they will, um, want us to hold, hang on to information too long without, without asking.
Your, your intention for this small group meeting would be to show them these four conceptual plans?
Yeah, so I emailed those to the two, to each, you know, the four, the four people and myself, you know, me and the four people participating. I thought we should have, you know, we could have, you know, a, a brief Zoom call, um, very soon, and then maybe talk that through, and then if, if the next step is sharing with each of, you know, the select board and, you know, CPC, sure, that, that would be, would be fine. I just, as part of what was on my radar was the neighborhood really does have questions, so we wanted to be forthcoming about, you know, this is the project, this is what we're thinking of, here are some concepts, um, get some initial, just questions and feedback and hear what their concerns are, without saying, here's gonna be, you know, a, a final plan, and this is the one everyone's leaning toward.
I never thought that it would be, yeah, okay, that's fine, yeah. But, you know, my intention was just to make a recommendation on, and with, with some reasons behind it, and then, uh, and then take input, because many times people come up with things that we didn't think about, and it changes how we approach something, so let's give everybody a chance to have a say.
Yeah, absolutely.
But they're gonna expect us to give them our very best professional recommendations.
Definitely. Now, what I was wondering is, um, you know, if this is something that all the CPC members want to attend, I mean, should we schedule it for a Tuesday night? I would be hesitant to schedule it at our January 19th meeting, because we have such a full agenda, but it could be the following Tuesday night, um, if that's the time that works.
Well, if you have a, the, the small group, well, okay, this is after the small group meeting, or you want this to be the small?
No, no, the small group meeting should be just kind of the Zoom call with the five of us.
Just us, right.
Yeah, just so everyone can see what we're, what we're thinking. Then, if you want to have another kind of a workshop discussion, and then we, on our way to having a neighborhood meeting, just because we do need to.
Yeah, because I would like everybody on the board to have some input, and then of course, the board select, the select board as well, so, alright.
Okay, I mean, would you like to have, would you like us to be on, as an item on our next agenda, just for, for discussion?
Um, on the 19th?
I don't know. I mean, if you want to have that discussion before a neighborhood meeting, I thought my next step, you know, because I do have some neighbors who've said, if it's on any agendas, please let us know. We really want to, we want to be there for all the meetings.
Let's do the small group meeting first.
Okay.
You're just basically the way you have it planned.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll, and then we'll. And then, and then we'll, and then we'll, uh, take what we get from that to the, uh, because I would like, having a little input from that side first, it doesn't hurt at all either. You know, what they're, what they're, what their expectations are, and that'll help us with our decisions as well. So let's do that.
Meaning to ask the select board or meaning?
No, no, to a small group meeting and then we'll take whatever we hear from that back to our board. And, um, and, and maybe have a meeting with the select board at the same time. I don't know.
Okay. But that, if that happens, I will have to notify the neighborhood that it's happening because they've, they've made it really clear that any discussions they really want to be part of. So that's kind of why I was hoping to do that neighborhood meeting sooner, just to say this is where we.
Okay. Well, let's, yeah, let's do that soon. And then, well, let's, let's do that meeting and then we'll decide where we go from there.
Yeah.
Let's see what we get out of that.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay, great. I guess that's it.
Okay.
That's all? Sure.
That's it. All right. Again, thank you everybody for coming tonight. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Vincenzo. It's always great to see you guys. Dave. Okay, Ryan, thank you. Dan, thank you.
Good night.